What everyone please say. The flag.
The flag of the United States of America and this year's republic for which it stands, one nation and one home, individual, liberty and the social.
Roll call. Ms. Malinick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Regnopolis. Here. Ms. Rappiscotto. Here. Ms. DeGrolle. Here. Ms. Donovan. Here. Ms. Keating. Ms. Upieri. Ms. Vodolak. Here. Happy with notice of this meeting has been provided by the following meetings. Annual notice was sent to the Herald and News director for South Bergen High School, the Observer, township clerk, and postman in the lobby of the town hall, and Vodolak. Setting forthcoming scheduled work meeting, meetings, and public meeting of the board. First order approval of minutes from the May 29 meeting. Roll call. Ms. Malinick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Regnopolis. Ms. Rappiscotto. Four. Ms. DeGrolle. Four. Ms. Donovan. Four. Ms. Keating. Ms. Upieri. Ms. Vodolak. Four. Ms. York. Ms. Lamargo. And so, three marks.
That was a long time ago. Alright, good evening. So here we are, just one day away from seeing our high school seniors off to what are sure to be super successful journeys in college and career, and just two days away from the start of the summer vacation. To all of the administrators, faculty, staff, PTAs, and parents working to make the end of the year so celebratory, so safe, and so positive, we say thank you. And in addition, we wish the class of 2018, as well as all of Lynnhurst's students and educators, the very best in their future career and educational journeys, be them in Lynnhurst or elsewhere. And so, after enduring a winter and district crises we thought might never end, here we are, ending one year and beginning a new. Comprehensive fiscal review and analysis led to this year's review of financial constraints resulting from multiple years of less than ideal practices. I'm proud to say that the district is now moving on from these issues by rectifying its deficits and adjusting its operations. With corrective action plans in place, I remain hopeful that the efforts to support our high-quality faculty and staff and administrators, to enhance and improve student achievement and well-being, and to reach new heights in Lynnhurst's performance as a district, will proceed so that Lynnhurst's progressive momentum towards a new, exciting, and innovative district design might continue under the leadership of a new superintendent. I urge the board to use this summer to work with the new superintendent and the district's administrative team to clearly identify its specific fiscal, educational, and facility goals for the next three and five years, and to include the community in its decision-making through many opportunities for conversation and feedback. Most significantly, it is my hope that the board commits its trust and support to its new chief educational leader when they are presented with his professional recommendations regarding instruction, programming, and personnel. The board's support of Mr. Greco will enable him to effectively do the work he has been trained to do while also enabling the board to focus on the significant work that falls under its collective responsibilities, especially work regarding policy and budget. I extend my sincere and best wishes to my successor, Lynnhurst's new superintendent, Mr. Anthony Greco. I remain optimistic about the future of the Lynnhurst Public Schools under his leadership. Likewise, I look forward to my three remaining years as a Lynnhurst high school parent, for it is in my role as mom that I have always found true solid purpose and content in. I remain grateful for the vast amount of support that has been granted to me by so many of my fellow community members and my amazing, talented, caring, and intelligent colleagues at every level during my 13 years of service as a teacher, principal, assistant superintendent, and superintendent in the district. It has truly been my honor and my privilege to serve the children of Lynnhurst with my whole self, minds, heart, and soul. Just as we tell our student athletes to do when preparing for a big game, I move forward from Lynnhurst knowing that I've left it all on the field, just as a true golden bear is expected to do. Feeling gratitude and not expressing it is like wrapping the perfect present and never giving it. With that in mind, I give you the Lynnhurst community my gratitude and appreciation. It is my true belief that sitting in our classrooms are some of the brightest, kindest, talented, and most respectful students in all of Bergen County, and strong contributors to their success have been some of the best parents and educators in all of Bergen County. At graduation time, I have often told students that as they go forth and continue on their individual journeys, they should keep their eyes on the destination, not on the winding path that is likely to bring them there. But most of all, when they get to where they are going, they must always remember where they came from. I now take this advice myself and embrace the winding road that has led me to a new place, one which will allow me to stay focused on and committed to my ultimate destination, being able to do work that I believe in, that I am passionate about, and that I have been trained to do, and that I remain committed to do in order to enhance the education and lives of students. And so, I am seizing these final days as Lynnhurst superintendent under the guiding words of Dr. Seuss. Don't cry because it's over, smile because it happened. I hope to see you in the supermarket, on the sidewalks of Lynnhurst, or on the Lynnhurst High School stands cheering for our blue and gold. A happy, restful, safe, and healthy summer to you all, and once again, thank you.
We have two people who would like to speak publicly. On the meeting agenda, first, Lane Scholar.
Good evening. I'm sorry you've been away so long, personal issues, but I'm back. You'll be watching. On the agenda, I noticed you have a lot of people that you appointed through contracts. Did you publicize requests or proposals for those positions? Or is business as usual?
Not all require RFPs or...
Some do, some don't?
Correct.
But some do.
Not all, what's up that would be approved is not, other than the food service.
So then you're gonna put that little statement, people go out for bins, and you just did what you did. Is that what you're gonna do in the paper, like you usually do?
Well, if you're food service contractor, which is not...
Okay. Now, usually, what month is that done in? Is that usually done when the new board sits, or is it coming this existing board? Considering that we're in November when we actually vote on school board members, we're not in April, so isn't it usually done in January? When you hire new people? Because my calendar year?
Yeah, that all your vendors in that...
So all these vendors will start as January 1st?
July 1st, I'm right.
July 1st? Alright, the school year. Right, do they change a little bit when you don't vote on the budget anymore, we vote because you just do it in November?
You would think, right, with January, you were sitting in January, but the school fiscal year still runs July 1st through June 30th. How is that possible?
Now, I noticed that you did do a lot of people. Did you ever think of maybe sharing with other districts, some of these professionals, so you could save money, so you didn't have to lay off people? Did you ever, did the board ever think of that?
Every vendor within that list, along with Rock and Book, who are directly part of the place, you won't want to...
And you know that for sure? And but there's no way that you didn't thought of sharing with another district, not my left pocket, it's my right pocket, to save money for not laying off people because somebody gets it later, the 3.9 million money that's not there? You didn't think of that, of actually doing it the right way, a shared service is re-upped? Nobody can bring that up? And I noticed this came out in the finance committee, which is Chris. How many meetings did you half-fold in order to do this? And you have the ministers, and Minister General Finance Committee meetings, and they are honorable? Okay, um, let me see. And this agenda that I've seen here tonight, was it posted on your website? Remember, it was the agenda, the whole app personnel was posted on the website? It was? Okay. Okay, now, let me go into your bill list. It's amazing, you spent $6,324,750.59. Well, for all that money that you spent, has every voucher been signed by the finance committee?
Finance committee has signed off.
Really? Anyone?
You, superintendent, and DA signed off.
Really? Okay. So you're saying then, when you have a finance committee, the way I used to do it, and when I was on the school board, finance committee sits there, and they usually used to sign off manually and not rubber stamp, so that the person who's in charge of that committee actually sees where money is going?
They review the bills.
Who's reviewing the bills now? So the state is coming in July 1st, or reviewing the bills?
Finance committee, myself, superintendent.
Superintendent.
Finance manager.
Okay, who was the finance committee person last year, year before, year before? Who was in charge of the finance committee? Do you remember? You were on the board then, the six of you that were on the board. Montgilla, and who was the other head deputy? And how did you, and how did you, how do meetings end, sign off?
At the time, we didn't have very many meetings.
Okay, so meetings last year, I was the financial, right?
Interesting, right? Forty-two leaders out of project, you don't even pay attention? Alright, let me ask you this. And prior to, yes, Chris, that was prior to you being on the board? Don't mention, alright.
That was prior to... Prior to my appointment, when I was on board in September 15, sort of finance meetings are reviewed.
Okay, I noticed you have computer checks, computer checks non-AP, hand checks, hand checks non-AP. Explain that please. And how would the process?
Non-APs are done announced, they're trying to include the system, they go through the financial software, they go through the bank. You don't have to cut checks on those, done internally, through the bank.
And who sees all those checks before they're cut?
I know.
And you are a voucher for every single one that's in here that is in the budget?
Yes, it's every one.
Okay, so, I don't want to get into the other part, but why did the 3.9 million get out of paid that wasn't in the budget? Anyone got that answer, or is that number of questions?
What is 3.9 million?
Well, the money that you're missing, that you had labeled for a lot of people.
That was done before me.
I understand, I'm not accusing anybody, I know it was done before you, but how did that happen?
That you weren't present.
I know, I'm sorry, I was trying to catch up, I want to hear it from you guys, I want to hear it from the leaders in the papers, I want to hear it here in the hallway.
I posted the entire presentation on the board website.
Go ahead.
Entire presentation's on the board's website, a long one, it goes line by line, I'd play it. Elaine, how can you tell the board of how the 3.7 million came about? You can go online and check it out.
Check it out, okay.
And these two services, there's one on them, healthcare was another one.
Was the money that was pledged, that was paid, or was like, what was the problem? That, or, I know you can't go for next year's budget, so how did you come to this 3.9? First, and you did pay, is this included, paying back the 400,000 with the grant? Is this included in the total?
The OFAC is included in this.
That's just in there?
Yes.
Okay. So...
The OFAC is included in the 3.7, right?
But is the 400,000 included in the $6 million total, yes, right?
400,000.
This is what you pay, the 400,000 that has the grant money that is you...
Elaine, that's, so that's still in litigation, right? So there are some points of that, and we remain hopeful that while the district will have to pay a portion of that sum, not the whole sum, but in the 3.78 million that we're identifying as a deficit, that certainly has the OFAC included in its, in its full.
Well, all I'm saying is that it's very upsetting to Lynnhurst Town to see that the money wasn't being held, the guidance wasn't being held by everybody, accountable for this money that what was happening, like, it has to get to the bottom of this to see what really happened, because it shouldn't happen if everybody, when you're an elected official, you're sworn in to uphold the law, it doesn't matter if there's policies or regulations, do not you swear on that Bible, you have to uphold the law, and if you don't, we as people, being elected, we need to hold everyone accountable, what happened to tax dollars. And I will make sure, I will find out when where this all went, because I have a lot of time on my hands now. But on the other end, I want to thank you, Shauna, for being a great superintendent here, and I'm so sorry you're leaving, because you were breath of fresh air, and I understand why you're leaving, that crap has to stop. And I, I want to wish you good luck into the district that you are going, and I will miss you, love you much.
Elaine, thank you for speaking here on the board. I appreciate it.
Mark Gumbel. Mark?
Uh, good evening. There were, I have noticed, a few things, so I'd like, that's a question that's not pertinent, just a reminder. Basically, it's a couple of things, like, this tenure, non-tenure teachers. For these tenured teachers that do some of this program, this is just stipend, basically, they're involved in these child study things for some of these other programs.
On the personnel agenda?
Well, no, it's only, this agenda, they're listed, and I know you can't get personnel, but I'm gonna say, of these non-tenured or tenured teachers on child study, is that a stipend on your summer program?
No, child, a week, child study is within our association, so they're employed by the district, that's not outsourced, that is, that is within the district. The only, the only portion of child study that becomes a stipend are the requirements that we have as per student IDP that extend into the summer, and that's what we approve on the, on the personnel in June. Thank you.
All right, I see here administration, there's tenure, non-tenure, obviously, again, question, I saw that there's standard to hire two technology teachers, which in this day and age, of course, is the future. Now, is there one, is one an administrator, or is one, and one not, or they share, or they have to share a job?
I'm sorry, the position that you're speaking of, I apologize.
Mr. Sedlock?
Technology, that's a, that's a great question, and I'm glad that I have the opportunity to explain that. So, for many years, and I don't have the precise number, but for many years, we have had Apex computers as a vendor servicing our district. They, they are excellent, they have always been, it is two gentlemen, it is James Hyman and Johnny Sedlock, they have always been outstanding in what they do. The concern that has been brought up to the board over multiple years is this, they know our systems, our daily operations depend on our systems. As a vendor, they have the ability to end their contract with us. If they were ever to choose to no longer service us, and maybe their company could no longer service us, we have no backup. No one else really knows the ins and outs of the system, because over their many, many years here, they have been really given the ability to create systems that were best for us, and they've done an amazing job with it. But the truth of the matter is, in today's day and age, for example, with standardized testing, we have to have a technology administrator available. They've always done it for us, but truthfully, as a vendor, they don't have to do that, because there's training at the state level they have to go to, and now they're basically signing off on our testing procedures. They've been great with it, but truly, it's the district's responsibility to have them employed. So what we have done is, we have decided to not use them as a vendor, but to hire them essentially at the same rate that they were being paid.
Absolutely. No, that, that was basically what I was wondering, that's why I see this out, the same, because they work in partnership.
Correct.
I have a part-time guy at the school, and I've seen what happens in this part-time, and you need, you need those people, because every day, one side of the school's down, the other side's up, change that, and so you need them. That makes sense, and that is the question, why? You went from membership, to...
To take the money, exactly. Thank you, it's a great question, thanks for giving that opportunity.
I, I do notice with, like, athletic, you know, trainers, you know, coaches, is there a limit on jobs that a certain person might have, and even though they're all part-time, they go over the guidelines that the state has, and make them, full-time, and they get benefits? Does the state have that? Such as this 29, yes? Part-time is working 29 hours or less per baker. Once you start averaging anything above that, consecutive months, you're entitled to benefits. So that's the break between part-time and full-time. All right, on that note, the term is called a permanent substitute teacher, would that be considered a criteria? They're a part-time permanent sub, that's different. Right, that means a criteria, they do bring the benefits, and... No, oh, they don't, okay, they're able to live under that. You know, they're permanent, they work in that, they're still a substitute. If they have other jobs on top of that, that wouldn't count toward it? No, most common toward it, they wouldn't get issued, would it sound? No, no, there's this one person, there's like, three jobs. Probably all, the state highlights. Alright, I'm almost done, just these old little things, I said I haven't done this in a long time. And then I didn't see this agenda, I only had the personnel, that's good. Just to follow up, sort of what Elaine was saying, I know it's difficult, but with vendors, you're locked in sometimes, and sometimes, we continue to monitor these vendors, and feel they're not getting the service that they're paying for, next year, or if there's time in this, during the year, to have a, I forget the expression, a services agreement, where they're not fulfilling the... That's correct. Can, we can do that during the course of the year? Yes. I know, again, that's all the more this guidelines on that, it's tied in, which is on the contract. Are they work on a partial payment issue, or are they... Or monthly? Depends on the vendor, how you like to work with them. Alright, basically, that's it, just a couple of things. Alright, thanks a lot.
Ms. Danzenopoulos, finance?
Any board, any board member takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of finance facilities of district planning committee may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be upheld. Here we go, I made a motion that the following finance facilities and district planning actions of the board numbered 1 through 56, that's 1 through 56, be adopted.
Roll call. Ms. Malinick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Regnopolis. Four. Ms. Rappiscotto. Four. Ms. DeGrolle. Four. Ms. Donovan. Four. Ms. Keating. Four. Ms. Upieri. Four. Ms. Vodolak. Four. Education and curriculum, Ms. Upieri.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of education curriculum committee may so indicate now in a separate motion that each of the accepted actions will be upheld. Here are none, I make a motion that 1 to 5 be accepted as read.
Roll call. Ms. Malinick. Ms. Jarvis. Four. Ms. Regnopolis. Four. Ms. Rappiscotto. Four. Ms. DeGrolle. Four. Ms. Donovan. Four. Ms. Keating. Four. Ms. Upieri. Four. Ms. Vodolak. Four. Policies, rules, and regulations. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of policy and rule and regulations committee may so indicate now in separate motion that each of the accepted items, actions, and things, here are none, and the motion is item 1, 2, and 3 be adopted.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Malinick. Ms. Jarvis. Four. Ms. Rappiscotto. Four. Ms. Rappiscotto. Four. Ms. Regnopolis. Four. Nice place. Ms. Rappiscotto. Four. Ms. DeGrolle. Four. Ms. Donovan. Four. Ms. Keating. Four. Ms. Upieri. Four. Community relations and safety. Yes.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of community relations and safety committee may so indicate now in a separate motion that each of the accepted actions will be upheld. And I move that items 1, 2, and 4 be adopted. Second.
Roll call. Ms. Malinick. Four. Ms. Jarvis. Four. Ms. Regnopolis. Four. Ms. Rappiscotto. Four. Ms. DeGrolle. Four. Ms. Donovan. Four. Ms. Keating. Four. Ms. Upieri. Four. Athletics, student activities, substance abuse, Ms. Upieri.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of athletics, student activity, and safety committee may so indicate now in a separate motion that each of the accepted items will be upheld. There are no, 1, 2, be adopted. Second.
Second. Roll call. Ms. Malinick. Four. Ms. Jarvis. Four. Ms. Regnopolis. Four. Ms. Rappiscotto. Four. Ms. DeGrolle. Four. Ms. Donovan. Four. Ms. Keating. Four. Ms. Upieri. Four. Ms. DeGrolle, your business?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of new business may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entailed. Hearing none, I move that 1 through 7 be adopted.
Second.
Number 1, please read secondly, please.
Number 1. Okay, those 3, 2, 3, 7.
Second.
Romo? Ms. Malick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Mr. Antonopoulos?
Four.
Mr. Rappiscotto?
Four.
Mr. Grillo?
Four.
Mr. Donovan?
Four.
Ms. Keith?
Four.
Ms. Alcieri?
Four.
Mr. Vono?
Four.
We have resolved that the Lerner's Board of Education approved the superintendent's evaluation for the 2017, 2018 school year.
Second.
Romo? Ms. Malick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Mr. Antonopoulos?
Four.
Mr. Rappiscotto?
I must accuse myself of this oath. I must accuse myself of this oath.
Mr. Grillo?
Four.
Mr. Donovan?
Four.
And thank you, Mrs. Vono. Ms. Alcieri?
Five.
Mr. Vono?
Four.
I have to point personally, thank Shauna for sitting here through all of these meetings and answering every question that came her way and being prepared for every question with an appropriate answer. Not only that, the service that she's given, it's, it's a terrible loss. On a personal note, I'm so sorry to see her go, but she's happy where she's going. She's going to a great system. I want to wish her the best of luck. And I want to say thank you for carrying these last three years. Thank you. Personnel, all. We don't have any government. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of personnel may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entailed. I am going to ask that 13 be accepted. So, for items 1 through 12, and items 14 through 24, give it up.
Second.
Romo? Ms. Malick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Mr. Antonopoulos?
Four.
Mr. Rappiscotto?
Four.
Mr. Grillo?
Four.
Mr. Donovan?
Four.
Ms. Keith?
Four.
Ms. Alcieri?
Four.
Mr. Vono?
Four.
Item 13. Agent Antonopoulos, one of the board members who received a 20% pension raise salary from a company that had a salary of $85,750 for the 17th, 18th school year and $87,467 for the 20th, 18th, 19th school year.
Second.
Romo? Ms. Malick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Mr. Antonopoulos?
Four.
Mr. Rappiscotto?
Standing.
Mr. Grillo?
Four.
Mr. Donovan?
Four.
Ms. Keith?
Four.
Ms. Alcieri?
Four.
Mr. Vono?
Four.
Okay, public hearing on non-agenda items. Rosanna, Almeda? Hope I got that right?
Yeah. Evening. So, I am a lifelong president, and I have been a parent of band students for over 10 years, beginning with my daughter, who graduated last year, continuing with my son, who is a rising sophomore. Between the two of them, I have experienced